It's Jenny. You got that? Yeah, okay. I thought it was Jennifer. Yeah, okay. Excuse me, we'll get started in a few minutes. The city clerk will be right back. And at that time, he'll swear the new zoning board of appeals members in. Before the meeting gets started.
Are we ready, Vern?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, good evening, zoning board of appeals members. Garland Doyle, the city clerk. So if you would all stand and raise your right hand for me, please. And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the charter of the city of Pontiac, Michigan.
And the charter of the city of Pontiac, Michigan.
And that I will discharge the duties of
And I will discharge the duties of
zoning board of appeals member
Zoning board of appeals member
of the city of Pontiac, Michigan.
Of the city of Pontiac, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I would ask of the ZBA members if you could just sign that oath of office form and give them to me. And we'll get the originals back to you after it's given to the city clerk. Yes. Chair Bueno.
Here.
Board member Evakwa.
Here.
Board member Anderson.
Here.
Board member Kirkandolph.
Here.
Board member McCullin.
Here.
Board member May. And Ms. Harris Ford asked to be excused.
Okay.
And Board member Burke.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Any communications?
No communications.
Okay, regarding the adoption of minutes. I don't know if this will be a question for law department. I think we have two cases that we've heard. Package number and something today, maybe. We don't have enough.
Correct. We don't have enough members that were present at the time. So we're going to hold off on any adoption of minutes for this meeting.
And those are old minutes, so you don't have enough minutes to vote on that now. So I don't know if the legal ramifications are still for the minutes that are still outstanding. So we might need to get some direction from the law department.
Sure.
Okay. Can you speak into the microphone, please? Sorry.
I hope I turned it on. Moving on to adoption of the minutes. So old business is no old business. Moving on to the new business. New business is 22 Myra, ZBA 2204. And may I have fact finding from staff?
Correct. City planner Smith will introduce CBA 22 dash zero four, 22 Myra.
Thank you, Vern. Thank you, Chair. Okay, getting started. Our first case today is ZBA 22 dash zero two. The applicant, Kerry Johnson, unfortunately was unable to attend this meeting. He had a prior scheduling conflict. But we've been working closely with the applicant and decided to bring it forth anyway. So if you do feel comfortable, you can make a decision today. And if not, we just have to come back at the next meeting. Otherwise, we will still hold the public hearing. So the address of the hearing is 22 Myra Avenue. This is a residential home, zoned R1, single-family dwelling. And this is for a dimensional variance. The applicant is requesting this variance to permit the ability to construct an addition on an existing home. So just for reference, this property is located south of Voorhees. It backs up against Mill Pond or the pond at Bodak Park. And this is an interesting-shaped series of parcels. So if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. The parcel that we are looking to provide this addition on is parcel B, which is in the back and is abutting the lake, the pond. And then parcel A, which is coincidentally also zoned 22 Myra, has a different parcel, but it is fronting Myra itself. So the applicant does own both properties. And is seeking a variance because there are two variance requests. One is to adjust the overall size of the parcel by reconfiguring the parcel lines to allow for enough space between the proposed addition and the property line, which is a dimensional variance for a setback. And then the second dimensional variance is to allow a lot to be less than 7,200 square feet. And I'll kind of touch into those in a little bit. But you can see on your screen, just to the right of that B is a kind of empty black rectangle with hashes. That is where they are proposing to add the addition onto the front of that home. So you can imagine they would enter their driveway here. And then they could actually drive into their garage where they currently do not have a garage. Currently, the property line is kind of here where this line is, which is very close to the proposed base of that garage. And they are looking to adjust that property line back closer towards this house on A to allow for a greater setback to permit that structure. Again, here, you can see a site plan of that plan. So to the right of your screen, you have Myra Avenue. You have the pond to the left. You can see the existing home where they are proposing the addition. You can see the small setback with the new proposed property line that they adjusted backwards. And then you can see the current distance between the existing home and the adjusted setback, which is 35 feet, which is actually in compliance with our zoning ordinance. Again, here's another. This is of their actual survey where you can see that the red line is where the existing property line was. And they're moving it towards Myra to that black line here. So you should be able to see that in your packets as well. They have provided some elevations of what that structure would look like. You can see the addition here to the right of the screen. Here's the front elevation of that garage you can also see. And then there are some floor plans as well that the applicant did provide. So I will just, again, kind of reiterate what those variances are and why they are requesting variances. So for your, just for you to know, there is a minimum front yard setback requirement that homes must meet, which is 25 feet between the front of the property line and the front face of the house. They are requesting a five-foot setback in a variance of, that would actually be a variance of 20 feet to permit that setback or less the 25-foot requirement. The second variance is, you can see it says requirement, all lots or newly created lots or newly adjusted lots would be required to meet that 7,200 square foot requirement. This is an existing lot. It is what we call a legal non-conforming parcel, meaning at the time, it was reconfigured. It was permitted, but it does not comply with that requirement today. So it is already legally non-conforming. And when you want to change a legally non-conforming to a criteria that is still non-conforming, it requires a variance. So it is currently about 4,700 square feet. They will actually adjust it and make it slightly bigger to 5,100 square feet, which is still less than the requirement for 7,200. I know I'm throwing a lot of numbers out, so if you have any questions, throw those back at me. So that is for one parcel. And then the other parcel also has the same dimensional variance for allotted square footage. It is currently 4,300 square feet. And with the change in property line, it's actually being less conforming and being reduced to 4,100. So they need a variance for the setback. And both parcels need variances for the square footage of the parcel to continue to be non-conforming. So that's kind of the framework of the dimensional variances that they're requesting. When we are determining, to determine if a dimensional variance is appropriate, there must be a practical difficulty in carrying out the strict letter of the ordinance, meaning there is some sort of challenge where the applicant is unable to follow the rules and dimensional requirements of the ordinance exactly as it is presented. Hence, they are asking for a variance from those dimensions. So I'll briefly run through these, and these are located in your packet. One, compliance with the strict letter of the governing area setback, frontage, height, bulk, lot coverage, and other dimensional or construction standards will unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose or will render conformity with such restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. It does comply with that requirement. A grant of the variance will do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners in the district. And a lesser variance will not give substantial relief to the applicant as well as be more consistent with justice to other property owners in the zoning district. It does comply with that. The plight of the applicant is due to unique circumstances of the property, which we did talk about. Okay. Number four, the property is not self-created or the problem is not self-created. Number five, the spirit of this ordinance will be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. It does comply with that criteria. Six, there is compliance with the standards set forth in section 6.401B. Also in compliance with standards contained in 6.303. And it does comply with both of those criteria related to special exemption and site plans. And then lastly, we do have some, just some minor staff findings in our review. As mentioned, parcel A, that is the parcel closest to Myra without the addition. With the change in property lines, it does maintain the requirement for a 35-foot setback in the rear of the home. Even though that property is being made smaller, it is still in compliance with the setbacks in the zoning ordinance. The variances for setbacks are primarily on parcel A, which is the home with the addition. Parcel A and B, as I mentioned, are both type C legal non-conforming lots, meaning when the configurations or when it was built, it was allowed. However, changes in the ordinance over time, today, it does not comply with the ordinance. Number three, variances are required, as I mentioned. One, to allow the reduced and enlarged property sizes or square footages less than 7,200 square feet. And then the second variance is for the front setback of parcel B. And then the last finding is both parcels A and B are owned by the same homeowner, the applicant, Mr. Johnson. And that concludes the presentation for this case here. As mentioned, the applicant is not here, so you can direct your questions to myself and or Vern. If you choose to make a decision today, that is up to you. If you feel more comfortable waiting until the applicant is able to attend, then we will just hold the public hearing and table the item, and then we'll bring it back next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone in the audience wishing to address the board at this moment? Opening up the public hearing, here's the opportunity to ask any questions to the board regarding this item. Any questions? Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing and turn to the board for questionings for any questions. And then I'll start down at that end for Jen. Any questions? Arthur, excuse the informality, I haven't got everybody's, we just got everybody's names.
No, I have no questions.
No questions, but could we table this till the guy get here?
We'll go through everything and then how it goes through.
No questions.
No questions.
Ding, any questions?
Yeah, I just have a question for Donovan. Forgive me because I'm new. But is there a lot coverage percentage restriction by ordinance?
That is a great question. Our ordinance does not state a lot coverage minimum or maximum. It just speaks to the, it has a setback requirement, a minimum lot size requirement, a minimum home size requirement. R1 residential lots are required to be 7,200 square feet minimum, a frontage of 50 feet, if I'm doing that one correctly, and then a minimum home size of 1,200 square feet.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. May?
No questions.
I have a couple of questions here. What threw me off first was on the site plan. The house off of Radon Myra, which be A, always, the one I have here, is listed as a garage, an existing garage. It didn't look like a garage when I drove by. It looked like a house.
Yep, and when we looked at it, it also looks like a house. We believe that is just a typo on that plan.
So it is a house?
It is a house, yeah.
Okay. The second question would be the parcel B where he's doing the expansion for the garage and so forth. Do you know, because I could not tell from here, the addition and what they're doing to, for the garage and so forth? Is that any higher than it is now?
You mean, is the garage higher than the height of the home?
Well, is the addition higher than the house is right now? Or I should say, what he's doing, it looks like he's doing more than just the house. He's doing the garage, what's an addition? Is that addition higher to parcel, their view from parcel A to the pond? Is it the same view he would have before and afterwards? After the addition is done?
From the perspective of parcel A?
From parcel A, correct.
Will parcel A continue to have the same views of the pond as they do today after the addition?
Okay, that's, just wanted to.
Yes, they should. It is, it's on. So you're asking, will this house here continue to see the pond from this angle? They would. The addition is on the other side, elevation.
As it is right now. As they do right now. Because these are two legally separate parcels. They just happened to buy the first one shortly, not that long ago. So, but they can, he can sell them or do whatever.
Correct.
So this was in front of the board. And we had the recommendations that was handed out. It didn't look like it listed.
We can provide you with a verbal recommendation. And I believe there may be one in your packet as well.
It probably should be read for the approval.
Yep. Oh, it's here. You have a ZBA 2204.
Right. It didn't look like everything was addressed here for both parcels. There are two separate parcels. You have two separate sets of finding and facts.
Yep. There, it's bundled together. It's just an interesting one because they have the same address. We can add the second, the language for the second parcel.
But they don't have the same address because the one's 22 and a half. I mean, legally, there's two separate addresses.
In our system, in BSNA, they're both 22. I think the post office uses them as 22 and 22 and a half. But our system doesn't take halves. So we just use the parcel numbers to differentiate the two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an interesting just configuration that, when they did those addresses.
Either plus or minus, or A or N, whoever reads this. How would he read it? Covers everything that you need to be covered?
It, we will have to add the second parcel.
Yeah, we would have to add parcel B onto it. And I guess what I'm thinking is, is that maybe the best way would be is maybe to table and allow the applicant to be here for the next meeting in June.
Okay.
That's my, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everything was clear upfront here on the verbiage and what everybody's approving. I didn't have an issue with the item with, that he's changing the property line as part of all of this. So, but just wanted to make sure it was covered. So that's all for my questions. And I'll then turn to the board for recommendation of tabling it.
I move that we table this to
Next month?
The next month.
Or the next meeting, I should say.
Next meeting.
You seconded it?
Yes.
I did. I seconded it.
Okay. Ready for me to make a roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Kirkandolph?
Yes.
Chair Bueno?
Yes.
Board member McCullin?
Yes.
Board member May?
Yes.
And Ms. Ford is absent. And board member Burke?
Yes.
And board member Evakwa. Did I slaughter anything again? I'm sorry. Okay, motion to approve the table.
Thank you. Now, we have a rare case here. Our next item on our agenda is to reconsider and rehear previous ZBA decision.
Do you want me to read the motion? Do you want me to read the motion?
If, if I could, board member Anderson, if I could provide a little bit of a background in regards to, for the members. What we're here tonight is basically on the agenda as an item that we're asking the ZBA to What we're here tonight is basically on the agenda as an item that we're asking the ZBA to consider scheduling at your next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be on June twentieth, to rehear and reconsider ZBA twenty-two dash zero two. And what has been determined is that taking a look at, looking at the zoning enabling act and looking at the terms of office shall be of three years and knowing the fact that basically all of the members did not, were not reappointed or appointed within those various timeframes, it was decided, and they kept on, or they were continued to sit on the ZBA and decide on matters for that period of time as part of their, part of their beyond, or I should say beyond or after their term had expired. And when we start looking at the city zoning ordinance in regards to ZBA, there is a very clear defined period of time of six months. Meaning that either a dimensional variance or a use variance or an interpretation, they have six months to enact. So when you take a look at particularly in regards to like say a use variance or a, I should say a building variance for a dimensional where they can start construction, basically that is determined based upon if a building permit has been pulled for that construction within that six month period. Or the approvals in regards to use variance that we're talking about here as ZBA twenty-two dash zero two of a building or premises that use has been established within that six months period. And so what we did was we went back and looked at the previous six months of ZBA cases that the previous ZBA board had reviewed, and there was one case in particular, or one case only within that six month period that was a use variance of twenty-two dash zero two, which was for allowing outdoor storage to be located on the Oaken Press site. Okay? So based upon that and looking at the zoning ordinance, it was determined that we need to reconsider and rehear that particular case because of, within that six months period. But also importantly is to rehear them and reconsider them at a point where we would rehear a brand new case. So in other words, we would go through the proper process and procedures in regards to notification in the paper, notify the residents or property owners within three hundred feet of that public hearing, hold the public hearing, hear their comments, and allow the new ZBA members to hear that case. So what we're asking for tonight is based upon that is to make a motion to approve that the, two things will happen. A proper notice would be sent to the applicant and also their attorney either through email and also at the address of the application. And we placed on the June twentieth of agenda and to rehearing considers for the reasons for doing so. And we will follow up with a, a motion from the current board in regards of scheduling that for a rehearing and a reconsideration.
Okay, here we, here we go. I move for the Pontiac zoning board of appeals to rehear and reconsider ZBA.
Before we make a motion, I have a question before we get into that part of it.
Okay.
Or on this case, I would just, I want to make two comments.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I've been on the board a long time, I don't know what the rules are, but we've always, the members on the board are always active members until they're replaced by the city council. We're supposed to have schedules of terms and so forth. I don't know, it's been twenty-five years, I don't think at least that they've ever notified what our terms are or what the, our staggered terms are, but it's always been, you're on the board until you're replaced. Not saying that you have to stay your whole term, it can be placed by any time by a council, by the, by the city council, but you'll be replaced in your terms. The twenty, twenty-two case, the one that was last year, I wasn't there voting, but I was denied. The one we heard, twenty-one oh six that we heard last time was approved. Are we just starting all over again? Is there something new coming on?
Is, is there more, newer information? That would be determined, I guess, from the applicant that would be submitting at that time.
I just, I didn't, I didn't vote for the last time.
Correct.
For a different reason, that's why I was just asking if was there anything new. But it was, but the board at that time approved, approved the case, so.
They did.
If that's the new law, that... What you're saying that the board hasn't really followed before, but that's what it is, you know, we'll rehear the case. But it's not been policy from the city council.
Why, I, it's making a, a valid point in regards to policy, but we're trying to adhere to the zoning enabling act and also our Pontiac zoning ordinance in regards to certain requirements and also regulations at this time.
I'm assuming we're not charging the applicant again?
Uh, we will not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I was, before, uh, before I read this, Mr. Gustafson, I think that the last time we had, when this time we come, come back, we need to have a clear picture of what's going to be there. This should go through, this should go through planning first because how are we going to prove something that people are complaining about that we haven't even seen? How do you know it's going to be outdoor storage, as you can see from the street, if we don't have any plans or print for it, while people are complaining about it? So I think this should go to the planning commission to go, so when it comes to us for zoning, are we doing? The zoning commission is to, and a use variance or, you know, a setback or whatever, that's all. But to approve a building that this can be used for this, or this can be used for that, or that can be used for that, that's not our job, that's the planning commission, that's the one on TV. You know? So I, I, you know, send it to the plan so we could know what we're looking at. Because I'm tired of getting questioned about why, and that's why that I have to read because I voted yes on it. But I'm tired of people asking me, why did I vote this way? We don't want that here, we don't want this here. Well, I didn't see all of this or what they were going to do, but what he said it was going to do. But you want me to vote on something that I, I haven't even seen, how the building going to look or nothing? Just, just approve it of use variance. So I, I think that's, I want to make a motion that this goes back to planning and complete color pictures and also the, the schematics of everything that they're going to do before you bring it to zoning commission for us to approve or disapprove. Because I'm tired of sick, I'm sick and tired of bringing, I've been on this board for a while, and we've been getting a lot of stuff from, from planning that should have been done, everything completely done in planning before. It's the zoning, but we only prove this, diff numbers, setbacks or this or that. We don't prove a building, what this is going to go there, what's going to do this here, and how they're going to do that. So that's one of the things, so you ready for me to read this?
Well, I guess I, the question I would have is, I understand where you're coming from, but also in regards to before the applicant, I think the applicant was interested in regards to, because it is a use variance and it does not, you know, it's a, it, it allows for a use, either permitted by right, that, let me back up. Within the C two district, outdoor, or we call warehousing or self-storage is not allowed in that district, either by right or a special approval use or a special exception permit. And so what we need to, we as a ZBA need to determine, I feel strongly that I understand where you're coming from, but at least if they are, that, you know, ZBA has to give the applicant the proper due justice in regards to examining the fact that they are allowed to go into that district before they go through the effort of developing an overall site plan. That's from my perspective.
Okay.
That's my advice.
You ready for me to read the motion now?
We have another question.
Another question.
Yeah, just a comment, and, and just coming from my experience on planning commission, four years in Rochester, I would be concerned with making an applicant put together a site plan and the expense and time, taking the time of the planning commissioners to review it and for them not to know whether they had a right of use or not. I, I understand your frustration too, because it's difficult to make a right of use judgment without understanding what exactly is going to be going on to the property. But, I mean, I guess as a ZBA, my understanding is we're kind of here to look at the numbers, like I said.
Right.
Just make a determination as to whether something is eligible for a, for a variance or not. And, and we should be able to do that just by looking at some simple parameters. So I guess I, from my perspective, I'd say, you know, keep it out of planning commission and, and make the, the use verdict here.
It was a double edged sword on this particular case.
Well, that is, is right.
And if I may?
It was a double edged sword.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of more questions regarding just outside storage. The building itself needs it some help, but to do all the property around it. There's no discussion about parking, you know, for the businesses in the building. I guess we'll pass it one more time.
And if I may, for the chair, there also may be the option where you can recommend, you know, you hold the hearing regarding the use variance, you hear the applicant, you have your back and forth, and then you can recommend that the planning commission look at it, and they can make their decision, and then it comes back. So that way you kind of give both of what you're looking for. You want the planning commission to provide input on the use overall, and if they are in support of it, then it could come back, and then the ZBA can vote to approve the use variance. So that may lead, you know, support both sides of, of your complaints against what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay, well, there comments from the board?
You know, I just, I'm trying to catch up, right? The first meeting, so obviously I'm, I'm just listening. But I just wanted to make sure I'm clear about the extenuating circumstances that would require us to come back. Was it simply because the expired terms of the members who voted in the affirmative were not enough to carry that, that vote?
Uh, not in the affirmative overall, because that entire...
So the board was expired?
Correct.
And not replaced at that time?
Correct.
So that is the, the extenuating circumstances that's requiring it to come back?
Correct.
Well, normally, you don't replace the board all at one time. Everybody's supposed to have staggered terms, so you don't run into the situation. And it's taken care of as they come up, you know?
Right.
Come out and replace, but again, not just the last few years, it's been forever.
Somebody certainly missed the ball on that one, didn't they?
Policy of you stay on until you're replaced. So other than that?
Okay.
Go ahead with your motion.
Record a motion, I move that the Pontiac zoning board of appeals to rehear and reconsider ZBA twenty-two dash zero two at a special meeting to be held on June the twentieth, twenty twenty-two at six o'clock.
If, if I may just really quickly, this will not be a, a special meeting, this will be a regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll say, I'll say a, a regular meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Do I need to get a second on it or something?
A second, sure.
It's been moved and supported by both members who voted affirmative on the last case, I guess.
Correct. Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Kirkandolph?
Yes.
Board member, or Chair Bueno?
Yes.
Board member Efequa?
Yes.
Board member McCollin?
Yes.
Board member May?
Yes.
And more, board member Burke? Motion passes, seven zero.
Okay, that ends our, our cases for today. We still have, our next agenda is for a new member orientation.
Yes, I will do the orientation. All right. So welcome commissioners, new and existing, won't say old, but existing. So we are going to do our orientation for our new members. And so we're going to cover a few topics. The information I'm going to be presenting is in the binder. You do not have to follow through the binder as I go through it. I kind of took all the main points and put them in this presentation. But if you want more information, all of it is in detail in that binder. So we're going to briefly touch on the code of conduct, the zoning board of appeals as it relates to the zoning ordinance. We're going to touch on some of the responsibilities of the zoning board of appeals. And then number five, which is zoning board of appeals handbook. I'm not going to go through it all today, but that handbook makes up about forty, I'd say about sixty, sixty-five, or maybe seventy percent of that binder itself, and it's located in the very back. So it's like seventy inch or so pages. But that kind of is a comprehensive guide to the ZBA, non-specific to Pontiac, just the, the board itself. Whereas the other items we're going to touch on are kind of Pontiac specific. So just briefly, I believe the first document in your packet, the first or second document is the code of conduct. And it just provides outline of about eleven items that we should take into consideration as commissioners. I'll briefly go through those. Accept responsibility to represent the zoning board of appeals to which you are appointed with dignity and pride. Conduct yourself in a businesslike manner respecting the rights and opinions of other members and of the public. Abstain from and not tolerate physical or verbal abuse. Accept the responsibility to promote and support the ZBA to develop an effective zoning program. Attend the meetings of the ZBA on a regular basis, provide prior notification of any necessary absences. Attend training programs in zoning in order to stay current on issues of concern for the community and zoning law. Respect, adhere to, and help enforce the policies, rules, and guidelines established by the ZBA. Read meeting packet materials ahead of time and otherwise be prepared for meetings. Refrain from deciding cases before the meeting discussion. I'm sorry, I've read that. Refrain from deciding on cases before the meeting discussion. And number ten, participate in the ZBA deliberation at the meetings when appropriate. And then the last three, participate in the ZBA, oh, that's a duplicate, I'm sorry. Number twelve, do not engage in criminal activities and other activities, including but not limited to situations of conflict of interest, incompatible office, ex parte conduct, not voting on the same issue twice by virtue of serving on two different bodies. We won't have that issue in this board or accepting gifts as form of influencing your vote. And lastly, in public forums, after a vote by the ZBA is taken, you represent the adopted majority position of the ZBA when speaking on behalf of the ZBA. So that document is in your packet. The second page says you have to sign it, you actually don't have to sign that, but it's just for your, for your record. Okay? In the greater packet, the greater document, you have, it's called the zoning ordinance. It says chapter four on it, or it'll say zoning board of appeals, chapter four. This is related to the fourth chapter of article six of the city of Pontiac zoning ordinance. And this essentially gives, is what gives the zoning board in the city of Pontiac its specific duties and responsibilities. There is the zoning enabling act, which Vern mentioned, which grants communities within the state the ability to have a zoning board of appeals. There is the zoning enabling act, which Vern mentioned, which grants communities within the state the ability to have a zoning board of appeals. And then the city of Pontiac has adopted a zoning ordinance in addition to some language in the municipal code, which is also included in your packet that gives the actual board power in the city of Pontiac. So I'll briefly go over these items. The powers of the zoning board of appeals, there are essentially four primary powers. One is generally to hear and decide on all matters referred to it by the provisions of this ordinance, which the next items we're going to go over. One of them is appeals of administrative decisions. There are times where the planning division or planning staff can make decisions on applications and cases that don't have to come to the zoning board of appeals. If the applicant wants to challenge the decision of the planning staff, the planning division itself, they can make a decision to bring that to this body for a appeal. So it's not a dimensional or use variance, it's just an appeal of a staff decision. So that's one of the powers, and you can vote to approve it, deny it, or repeal the decision of staff in favor of the applicant. Second would be interpretations. So in part, one of the responsibilities of the zoning board of appeals is to interpret the ordinance where it may be unclear or requires more clarification for the intent or purpose of the item at hand or the ordinance itself. So if there are times where an applicant wants to do something and a planning staff is unable to make a clear decision based on how the ordinance presents itself, we can bring it to the ZBA and then you can provide that interpretation or insight on that interpretation. And then you make a motion on how to proceed well with that type of inquiry. And then last would be variances. There are two types of variances, and I'll get into those next. We have dimensional variances and use variances. Those are the two types of direct variance powers that are granted to the zoning board of appeals by the zoning ordinance. The dimensional variances, as the one you did previously, is a variance or a increase or decrease from a dimension or number criteria within the zoning ordinance itself. So this could present in the form of setbacks, height requirements, total coverage, lock coverage, square footage. Let's see, I'm trying to think of some more dimensional standards. Any dimension in the ordinance that an applicant wants relief or variance from, they can request that through a dimensional variance. There also, as kind of we talked about earlier, there must be a practical difficulty, which is a, a non-use variance shall not be granted unless the zoning board of appeals finds that there is a practical difficulty in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the ordinance. And determining whether practical difficulty exists would be those seven criteria I read out earlier. So if they meet those criteria, then you can argue that a practical difficulty exists, which justifies approving a dimensional variance. And when these items come, we present those to you, so you less have to guess if they exist. We kind of outline those and we'll tell you what practical difficulty does or it does not exist. So it kind of takes that guesswork out of it. A use variance is very different, and you briefly talked about use variances today. In the zoning ordinance, it does identify zoning districts and uses permitted in those districts. Where a use is not permitted, an applicant can request a use variance to allow a use in a zoning district that is otherwise not permitted. This requires a concurring vote of two-thirds of the members of the zoning board of appeals. They must meet the requirement of remedies exhausted, which means they must attempt to try to do that use at that location, which is essentially making an application to the planning division, staff providing in writing that this use is not permitted for the various reasons. Then that applicant can request a variance from that criteria. An unnecessary hardship must be identified to justify approving a use variance. And again, use variance is similar to practical difficulties, I'm sorry. Unnecessary hardships also have a series of, I believe it's seven to ten criteria that we look at to identify if that unnecessary hardship exists. So again, we will identify those criteria, give a stance on them, and then we will let the commission know if that unnecessary hardship exists. Again, to take out the, you know, the guesswork of you trying to identify if it does or it does not exist. And that concludes at least all the items, majority of the items in your, in your packet. Again, the zoning board of appeals handbook, which is that last section, goes into a lot more kind of minutia details, which may be good for you to read. And then the last, very last, maybe four or five pages are just examples of some cases we've done before. So you can just see how they're presented and how they will come to you. I believe there's a case for a use variance and a case for a dimensional variance. I believe the use variance is for, that may be the tire shop on Baldwin or Cerritos Chavez. And then the use variance is for ten fifty-six golf yacht. So those are just examples of those cases. And you can also see those criteria I mentioned before, the practical difficulty criteria and the unnecessary hardship criteria. So if you have any questions, you can direct those to me and I can answer them the best I can. Thank you.
And also, thank you very much Donovan for that overview in regard orientation, but also in regards to any ways that, you know, feel free as new members, you know, if there's any ways that we can better present or any other additional information to provide you with at the meeting, just let us know and we'll kind of modify it based upon the zoning board, the board members' direction. Thank you.
And I would like to add, there's also in that first series of pages, it says the zoning board of appeals rules and procedures. And that is essentially the board's bylaws. That document, I believe you look in the corner, it says like nineteen eighty-eight on it or something like that. We are looking to update that. So, yeah, so everyone, if you do give it a read-through, and then likely either at the next meeting or the following meeting, you'll start to see a draft coming and we'll start asking you for your input on it. That will be an opportunity to change the meeting time or date, maybe add new rules or take some of the old rules out, make things more clear. So just keep those things in mind and as you see, may see that coming in the next two to three meetings.
Thank you. Anybody have questions at the moment? Okay.
When are we getting our lapel pins?
Oh.
The last mayor gave us them, so.
Yeah, actually I have them down in my office. I'll bring them next month.
The new, the next item is election for officers for the zoning board of appeals. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vern.
Sure, myself and Donovan.
Here, I'm not going to be running for any either position, so. Do you have a new board? Does Vern go through a nomination process? Anybody wants to run for both the chair and vice chair? I think that's all.
Yes, we're looking forward to select amongst the board a new chair and vice chair. So the way we've handled it in the past, just recently with the planning commission, and Donovan can give a further explanation, but basically if you're interested in being chair or vice chair, we'll, first we'll determine based upon your nomination of yourself or another member to be a chair. We'll look for those names and we'll all take a vote on it. Donovan, if there's anything else?
Yeah, I just have some general election rules and policies. I'll just kind of share those with you and how the process will work. We'll start by the president of the chair, they'll open the floor for nominations. A member does not have to get recognition to nominate, you can just yell out a nomination. You can nominate yourself. A nomination does not need a second, so you can just make the nomination. And a member can be nominated for more than one office, so you can nominate someone for chair and vice chair, they just cannot hold both seats. A member can decline a nomination when it is made. And then once all the nominations are made, the president will then, or chair will close nominations. If anytime during the nomination process you decide to no longer be a nominee, you can at any time just, just say you don't want to be a nominee anymore. Once nominations are closed, Vern will then give a roll call for the two term, sorry, the two positions and those nominations. He will go through all the names and then he'll do a roll call vote. And then that will make that decision for that position, then he will go to the second. And that will essentially conclude the nominations and the voting. And then that concludes the whole election process. And then everyone takes their new positions. Vern is at this meeting or next meeting?
I will take their new position next meeting.
Next meeting. All right. So with that being said, if there are any further questions, chair, at your convenience, you can open nominations for chair and vice chair.
I open the nominations for chairman of the board and vice chair. We have a nomination for dean for chair.
I nominate myself for vice chair.
Any other nominations? If not, then I'll close the nominations and we'll have a vote for dean for chair of the board.
If I can get somebody to make a motion to have Dean Bevaqua? I'm slaughtering it again. Bevaqua, excuse me. I know, okay, okay. I'll still have it.
Then we have.
Yeah, okay.
Dean is.
Okay, if I can get a motion and a support?
A motion.
Okay. Support?
Support.
Okay. Okay, board member May?
Yes.
Okay. Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Bevaqua?
Yes.
Board member Bueno?
Yes.
Board member Kirkendorf?
Yes.
Board member McCollin?
Yes.
And board member Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for taking the position. Our next nominee is, this is Kirkendorf for vice chair?
Yep.
And a motion.
A motion that we.
Okay.
Kirkendorf is vice chair.
Have a support?
Support.
Support.
We supported, I'm sorry.
Mr. Club.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay, board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member McCollin?
Yes.
Board member Bueno?
Yes.
Board member Bevaqua?
Yes.
Board member Kirkendorf?
Yes.
Always good to get you around. Board member May?
Yes.
And board member Burke?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, seven zero.
That ends our elections. Are, is any of our new members part of the planning commission?
Uh, no.
Aren't we supposed to have them?
Um, it's suggested.
We can't have a, used to be a councilman is part of a, of the planning, but councilman cannot be.
No, I'm talking about one of the board members being from the planning commission.
Oh, no, that's.
Like Lucy Payne was.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, rep.
No, she just was on two boards, that's it.
No, she's, she was on two boards, but she was zoning board's.
Yep, so the, the, in the zoning board of appeals, that rules in procedures. It does call for or allow for a member of the planning commission to also sit on the zoning board of appeals. So there would have to be a, city council will have to nominate someone to do that.
And now with, obviously, board member Payne resigning from the zone board of appeals, we do have vacancies. So we'd be looking for city council to fill that void or alternate, I should say.
The, that ZBA, the joint member, they won't be able to sit as the alternate. So when that member is appointed back to the board, the alternate would then have to go back to their alternate position. So right now, the alternate is filling in for that seventh seat.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. That ends the elections. The next item is a public comment. And here's your opportunity to address the board for a few minutes on any topic.
Thank you, former acting chairman, Bueno, and welcome, new chairman and new vice chairwoman. Matthew Gibb, forty-eight West Huron, here in Pontiac. I'm the owner of a company called Charter Course Legal that does economic development as well as the chairperson of the hatchery tech incubator that we just brought to Pontiac. I'm also a partner of Alan Bishop and the attorney for HESAP, which is at the address of forty-eight West Huron. We were made aware this morning of the action that you took tonight to seek to reconsider the zoning board of appeals approval on May, on March twenty-first of the use variance for forty-eight West Huron. The memo that was included in your packet indicates that we had been given prior notice and we didn't have that notice. We don't really complain too much about it. It did take us by surprise today. As most of you know, my background is only in economic development as an attorney, as the former deputy executive for the county. I essentially have done this my whole career. This is the first time that I've ever seen a city that would seek to replace an existing board, whether its appointments were expired or not, and its very first action as an administration would seek to undo a prior approval. It's really unprecedented in the state. At least that, any other attorney that I talked to today that does this likewise that I do, we are all scratching our heads a little bit as to how do we even approach this? I appreciate the question of, would they be required to pay a fee again? We hope not. One, we're surprised that the application would even need to go through the process again. The zoning enabling act, which guides the structure of the zoning board of appeals in cities in Michigan, says that ZBA approvals are final. It's very definitive in the statute. It also says that the only ability to appeal those is by an aggrieved person. It's never been interpreted ever in the history of any court decision that I can find that the city had standing to, to appeal a decision because your voice is the voice of the city. And the administration by court rule by the Supreme Court also cannot influence or in any way guide you. And so that's why you never see a mayor or a township supervisor or anybody else at a zoning board meeting because it immediately renders the process improper and the applicant would prevail at all stages. In this case, the memo clearly indicates that the administration sought separate legal counsel and directed planning staff to move in this direction. So we're, we're surprised. We're just surprised by all of that. As an attorney and as someone that has followed this practice for now almost thirty years, this will be my twenty-ninth year of doing this work, I'm not sure how to respond to it. We have, as a partnership, expended well over a hundred thousand dollars since the approval of your predecessor board. Whether that board had authority or not, we relied on it. We believed under the enabling act that, that that use approval was granted and that the use on the property is, was really, we really clarified the types of things we would be doing, the restrictions. Even your good planning director, who I admire greatly, said that there would be restrictions. We've been about planning the site, hiring architects, going to trade shows, working with other people, bringing in technology incubators to fill the space as we promised we would, and it's been significant, significant expense. In the prior action, we had two times that we brought this to the city. The first time we presented and the vote was in our favor, four to three, but as Donovan has very adequately pointed out, it takes five votes to get. has very adequately pointed out, it takes five votes to get a use variance. And so we asked for reconsideration, but the city was able, unable to convene a quorum for several, several meetings. And finally, Mr. Gustafson and I consulted and he said, Matt, submit a new application, which we did, but what we did then was we spent tens of thousands of dollars on local architects and urban planners, particularly Mark Nikita, graphic artists to create renderings. This became a very, um, passionate project of ours because of the significant investment in the Oakland press. So now that it's been put to a date of June twentieth for potentially your reconsideration, um, we're a little, I'm just being honest with you, I'm going to have to figure out what to do. Do we now start the checkbook again? Do we reengage those people? How much of a presentation do we have to do? What further expenses would we have to incur? All on what seemingly would be a great risk, to say that all of the work that's gone into this at this point and the securing of all of those people might be placed in jeopardy on a new and independent review of what has already been approved by your predecessor board. So I'm saying that just in honest candor. All of you that do know me know that I've been involved in the city for a long time. The Bloomfield Park project doesn't happen unless there's some creativity, and M1 concourse doesn't come to this city unless I'm involved, and Williams International doesn't come here unless I'm involved, and the soccer complex doesn't expand and we don't have that project unless I'm involved. That sounds very egotistical to say to you, but, um, this project is no different, that we have been very, very creative, and I would really just voice out loud the burden of the idea that we would ignore the fact that the enabling act that permits this board of appeals to exist in its entirety would be completely ignored, in the sense that a zoning board decision can only be appealed to the circuit court of Oakland County within twenty-one days by an aggrieved party, which in the history of Michigan court rules has never been a city. So we'll consult with your good planner, we hope to be present on the twentieth, um, but I felt that you needed to hear all of that. It's, um, it's a very awkward position for the city to be in. At a minimum, uh, uh, the attorney that was retained by your good mayor, uh, to do this is not the city attorney, and so, um, it'll be interesting to see what direction was given there, um, in that regard and how that opinion was crafted, um, to be had. But you need to know that we were caught very much by surprise after spending a significant amount of time that we continue to hope to do to build out this site in a way that really is beautiful for the city. So I've exceeded my time, new chair, acting chair, and I appreciate you letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Uh, not at this, not at this moment, maybe afterwards. Um, any other, anybody else in the audience listening to address this, this is a public comment, period?
Good evening. My name is Robert Bass, I'm the president of assistant district council in District One, and I just wanted to welcome all the new board members and to say that I look forward to working with all of you because anything that has to do with development in a development area, which is District One and the rest of the seven districts, I will be coming down to voice my opinions or my objections. So, uh, I know most of you up there, I'm very happy to see you again, so I welcome all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please state your name and address?
Yes, hi, my name is Julia Ruffin, and, uh, I'm a member of, uh, District One CDC. I want to say welcome to all of you, some of you I know, and it's good to see you and congratulations. Um, I hope that you will do your due diligence on behalf of this city. Um, I hope that you will, um, make sure that we don't get sued, and that you will, um, do the things that are going to benefit our city. We're at a transformational point in this community with new industry and new economies coming here, and I'm hoping that you will do your due diligence in the best interest of the people here in this community. So I applaud you, thank you for stepping up, accepting these positions, and giving of your time to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers moving up? Uh, any miscellaneous from staff? None?
No.
Then, uh, motion for adjournment, please?
You got, please, wanted to say something?
Who? Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I did have a question for the attorney, but, um, I can probably do it off.
Okay. Okay, then, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved and supported by, to adjourn. Can I roll call?
Board Member Anderson.
Yes.
Uh, Board Member Beva Qua.
Yes.
Board Member Bueno.
Yes.
Board Member Kirkendolph.
Yes.
Board Member McCollin.
Yes.
Board Member May.
Yes.
And Board Member Burke to adjourn.
What's up?